And remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
I read from scripture. I exalt therefore that all prayers and supplications and intercessions should be given, and thanks also be given to God for all men and women, for kings, and for those that are in authority, that they may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God and our Savior. Today I want to present the city and the mayor and the city council to God in a very special way, asking the Lord, as he has been with us ever since, to continue to be with us and see us through these difficult times until we overcome the pandemic. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity you have given to the mayor and the city council to serve the people of this wonderful city. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give them a spirit of service and remind them that they are stewards of your own authority. Guide them to be leaders of your people, especially your people in need of them. Help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who even disagree with them and to continue to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Finally, Father, renew them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of human persons. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness, that you always hear us through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pray so please to the choir of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the physical and the spiritual.
Thank you, Father. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames here.
Mayor Proton Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
And Councilmember Muton.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations or proclamations today, so I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on scheduled agenda items one through four or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to comment on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any, Mayor.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on items one through four, the consent agenda? Okay, if you're here to speak on any other item today, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. So now, counsel, is there a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Mayor, counsel, item number one. We have an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending section 2.03.074 of the Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of grade-one firefighter positions in the Beaumont Fire Department from 100 to 109, providing for severability and providing for repeal. The EMS division, as you know, formerly was a part of the Public Health Department. It was moved into the Fire Department in January of this year. The administration is proposing to staff one ambulance at this time with firefighters, which will require hiring nine additional employees. The administration plans to staff city ambulances over time with firefighters, who are also paramedics, EMT intermediates, or EMT basics. As firefighters are hired and the city can staff the desired number of ambulances each day, vacant civilian EMS positions will be eliminated. If the staffing of one ambulance with firefighters is successful and additional firefighter positions are added by the city council in the future, the transition will likely take many years. I would like to thank Sherri Olmer, Max Nguyen, Chief Earl White, Chief Singler, Dr. Kavispar, the Fire Union, and all of those involved, really for the last year and a half, for getting this plan implemented thus far. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number one. Is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve amendment section 2.03.074 of the Code of Ordinances to add grade-nine, grade-one firefighter positions.
Okay, there's a motion. Would you like to second it?
I'll second, Mayor. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for one, just one. How many are we trying to ultimately get up to?
I'd say six or seven. I mean, we're looking at, you look at the number of calls each year across the city, where we have weaknesses as relates to response times. And so over time, right now, I'd say the goal is to have six 24/7, or at least most times, you know. The good deal with it under the Fire Department under Chief White is you have 12 fire stations spread out across the city. So most of the time, they're going to be the first at the scene. And then an EMS unit is there second, you know, hopefully within, say, eight to 10 minutes. But we look at the response times and the number of calls and how those calls go up. In most cases, they go up year after year after year. And so it's something that Chief White will monitor and make recommendations to me, and I can come to the council. But I'd say, right now, the goal is six.
So would the idea be to maybe do this one per year?
I'd say staff, see how long it takes to staff this one ambulance. Let's see if it's successful, learn from it, and then try to implement the second one, the third one, and so forth.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
For the city manager, and this is not, this is not a new ideal. This is something that's been happening across the nation with other cities our size, to move away from civilian to more firefighters for the EMS. And in other cities, we find that this is a proven, a proven model.
Yes. Good point.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, as read. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number two, please.
Item number two is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brass Star Contracting Incorporated for rehabilitation work on 16 lift stations. The city of Beaumont currently operates and maintains 76 wastewater lift stations throughout the city. This project will provide for the rehabilitation improvement of 16 minor lift stations following damages sustained during Tropical Storm Harvey. The project includes installing elevated platforms and replacing electrical controls and equipment. The contract is in the amount of $1,320,000. That funding source information is incorrect. What it should say is that FEMA will provide the nearly, well, $1,188,000. And that, that $132,000 will be paid for out of the Harvey fund, which is a city match. I'd like to thank Bart Barcoiak, Molly Villarreal, and Mike Harris, other staff, Michael Tywater, everyone involved. It's been an arduous process working to get these funds approved. We recommend approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number three, please.
Item number three is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Playco Limited of Lumberton for rehabilitation work on three lift stations. This project will provide for the rehabilitation and improvement of three major lift stations. Again, follow, following damages from Harvey. The contract is in the amount of $671,493.01. And the funding source should say that FEMA will provide $604,000, a little over $604,000. And that match of $67,149.30 will be paid for out of the Harvey fund. Again, that's the required city match of 10%. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve the resolution.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mayor, because of relationship with the owner of Playco, I need to abstain from this vote on this item.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, as read. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes with one abstention. Item number four, please.
Mayor, counsel, item number four is to consider resolution requiring that face coverings be worn by the public in all city-owned facilities operated by the city. As you know, Governor Abbott's order will lift the mask mandate effective tomorrow morning. Mayor Ames has placed this item on the council agenda for your consideration.
Thank you, counsel. Is there a motion on this item, please?
I second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, and since I asked for this to be put on the agenda, I will clarify a bit. So as everyone knows, the governor's order for masks will be lifted tomorrow, as well as opening up at 100%. I do believe that opening up at 100% is something that we need to do. This is an economical issue, and I'm 100% in favor of that. However, in being 100%, my concern comes in with the city venues, whether it be the Civic Center, the Julie Rogers, that can hold multiple amounts of people. I have looked at other cities throughout the state, and there's been several that have done this. This is, I watched the reasoning behind it. I'm not saying that this is forever. What I'd like to do is have counsel support this, if you choose. If you choose not to, that's okay too, but I think we also need to think about our employees that work in these venues, that deal with the public, and how they might have concern about it. A face covering doesn't hurt economics, but certainly 100% opening does. And like I said, again, I support that 100%. We may not want to keep this in effect very long. As everyone knows, we are continuing to get vaccines in, and the more people we get vaccinated, the better we are as far as this is concerned. The CDC made an announcement even this past week that if people gather, especially small groups, whether it be families or friends, if everyone has had both shots, then they approve of not wearing masks. But we're talking about venues that can hold two, three, four, 5,000 people in close capacity, since it is at 100% now. And this was my thought process behind this. For any of y'all who have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also read the executive order, and my thought press process on it was, one, I understand the concern for the city employees to want to keep those guys in masks. But my thought on that was, was that is a city manager decision, not necessarily something that should be dictated by the council. With that being said, the way the governor's orders were written, in my interpretation, so somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we can't put any teeth in this thing anyways.
That's true.
So I have a problem supporting an ordinance that means nothing.
Well.
And so would it be possible for us maybe to pass a resolution where we encourage citizens to do it?
That's something we can discuss, but this doesn't really change. I get what you're saying. It doesn't have teeth in it. But the governor's order didn't either. What we've been abiding by this last few months or year has been, there's no, there's no teeth in that either. We just try to support the governor's order. And like I said, we are seeing more and more people be vaccinated every day. That's the whole reason for this. And I think I honestly totally agree with Governor Abbott. And I actually have talked to him and told him that I support the 100%, but I think the mask lifting was somewhat premature, not majorly. I think at some point, when we see more and more people getting vaccinated, that we're gonna, that things are gonna change. And believe me, I'm not enjoying this right now at all. I agree. But I also think it's the right thing to do if counsel disagrees. Now, what the city manager, on your other comment, what the city manager could do is say, we're not gonna ask patrons to wear masks, but employees need to wear masks. And I know some restaurants are actually doing that, and he could do that. But the city manager does not have the option of doing it for patrons in public buildings, because I did talk to him and the attorney before I had this put on the agenda.
But my interpretation is, is we don't either.
We can pass a resolution for anything that the city owns.
Yeah, maybe a resolution, but just a recommendation is all it would be.
Well, that's, that's basically what the governor's order is.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes. Either one, go ahead, please.
I believe that this is a matter of interpretation. The governor has recommended lifting it. I believe we have the ability and the authority to pass resolutions that impact our buildings. And I would rather err on the side of caution, and particularly if there's no actual monetary impact on businesses, or it, it just, it's out of respect for others. We've had too many people die as a result of this. And the percentage of our citizens that have had the shot, I think, would dictate to us, we're not there yet. So I'm, it's okay for us to differ in our opinions. I don't agree with what the governor has done, but that's, he made that decision. But I believe we have the authority to pass a resolution that requires the masks be worn in city facilities. And I want to always err with trying to bring about a clarity, a clear message, that we're not through this yet. And because we're not through this yet, I would like to encourage our citizens, not only in city facilities, but in the general public, when indoors, to continue to wear masks. They don't have to, but that's, that's my opinion.
There's been several, there's been several businesses that have said, like HEB and Kroger, and some of those have put some information out about that they are gonna continue to require it. And the governor's order, by the way, absolutely allows for this. Councilmember Muton.
That's okay. Well, I would just like to say that we are not out of the woods. And I just believe if we don't wear the mask, that it's just gonna be a setback. It's gonna be another setback for us, because although people are being vaccinated as we speak, the, the numbers are still not where they need to be. And if we don't take some type of precaution, we're just gonna go right back where we started from. And rather than lose the ground that we've gained, at some point, we have to look for a better solution that's gonna be a solution for the good of everyone. I just think that while we're on an upswing with the vaccinations, that we need to just continue to err on the side of caution. And we have several, several emails from citizens, and, and some of them are right here in, in front of me, that are asking us to please not do away with the, with the mask mandate. I mean, a half a million people dying. It's, it's just, it's just no room for, for error right now.
Yes. Well, unfortunately, this has been made a political issue, and it's a health issue, and that's how we have to look at it. Okay, there is a motion. Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, so there is no doubt we're not out of the woods. Many of us, including myself, have lost close friends to COVID. In fact, the president of one of the neighborhood associations in Ward Two died recently as a result of exposure to COVID. He was 61 years old. We're not out of the woods, but I have said from the very beginning, to not live in fear, but to make wise choices. One of the governor's provisions said that a speaker at a public meeting can take the mask off, as I just did, to speak. It's as if magically things are not going to be spread while I'm sitting here not speaking, but when I take the mask off, you know, that standard no longer applies. There's such hypocrisy with all of this that you really don't know what to think. I attended an event, Dancing with the Stars, at the Civic Center last week. It was great to see people out milling around. While they're at their table, they don't have their masks on. They're eating, they're talking, they're drinking. I presume they're breathing. You know, when they get up to go to the restroom, I guess they're encouraged to put their mask on. I don't mind complying with any business that wants you to wear a mask, because it's their store, their rules. I also will wear a mask when it's not possible to social distance. But right now, I'm six feet away from everybody. So, you know, I really don't know what the mask would do then. It has been politicized. I agree with that. But I think that this is the United States of America, and people need to be able to make their own decisions. And I heard twice, people need to err on the side of caution. Well, the ultimate way to have caution is if you have a concern about entering a facility where people might not be wearing masks, don't go. Try to get your business done another way. You know, grocery stores will not deliver. You can do almost any business you want now with City Hall online. There's no requirement that you go to a social event, like Dancing with the Stars, where you know that you're gonna encounter a lot of people not wearing masks. I understand the fear. I really do. It's real. But I also understand that this is supposed to be a free country, and it can't be enforced. It's not gonna be enforced. And I'm kind of with Councilmember Neal in all that respect. I have a problem issuing a mandate that can't be enforced.
I appreciate that. The only thing I would say about that is the whole reason for this being on our agenda. You made the comment that if you can social distance, then you don't need to wear a mask. I kind of get that. I'm not close to anybody right now, but it is, it is a mandate by the governor right now, so I'll do it. But when the 100% goes back into effect, you're not gonna be able to social distance. And so if you're in a facility at 100% capacity, you won't be, that's the thought behind this, with all due respect. The thought behind it is, if we're at 100% occupancy, then people are not going to be able to social distance. That's what the thought is. It's no different than what we've done before. And I've put, for one, at a social event like you're talking about, have no problem with people sitting at their table, and, and actually, most restaurants. And I've even seen signage to that in other cities that say, a mask is required when standing up or walking around, but when you're sitting, you don't have to wear it. And I'm, that's, that's the thought process that I'm in. But like I said, this is something I wanted to bring to the council, because I didn't want the governor's order to go into effect tomorrow, and our employees and our different facilities not knowing what to do. I think that we need to give them some direction, and that's why we're here today. If you don't agree with it, then vote against it. I'm gonna call for a vote. Go ahead, please.
What do we do, Mayor, when somebody shows up not wearing a mask? Do we tell them?
What did we do last week? Same thing.
Are we gonna tell them if they show up, for instance, the symphony? And they don't wear a mask, we're gonna tell them they can't come in?
We've always asked people to put a mask on when they come in.
Okay. What if they say no? Do, do we tell people? I mean, this is one of the things we gotta work to think through.
What do you think we should do?
Well, I'm asking you. It's your resolution.
May I, Mayor?
Sure.
I, I don't think we wanna mislead or misrepresent the governor's order. He specifically says in his order, it says that except that a legally authorized official may act to enforce trespassing laws and remove violators at the request of a business establishment or other property owner. So there is the ability to have folks removed if you have in place an order that face masks be required.
By law enforcement, we're not gonna ask our employees to enforce the law.
No, I don't think you would, but that is in the order. And I don't want it to be said that there's no enforcement in the, in the governor's order.
There is. You could call the police or whomever. But, but I don't think, I mean, and Emily's here, but I don't, I believe that the direction that we've given to her for her employees in the past, because I know there have been several events that a lot of the people there chose not to. And they just do the very best they can. They ask them if they decide not to. We're not gonna like flank them at the door and cause them not to be able to go in. The whole idea is just to get people to continue to err on the side of caution. We do have the right to do this. Any council member that doesn't agree with it, vote against it. I'm just bringing it to us so we know where we're going from here, and we know what to tell our employees to do, because that, that, we are charged to do that.
Well, and that's the point I'm trying to make. If somebody bought tickets to the symphony, and they show up, and they don't have a mask, are we gonna tell them they cannot come in? I mean.
We have not so far.
Yeah, the answer, the answer is no.
Okay, I, I'm clarifying this for our citizens.
Yeah, the answer is no. However, our staff, and we have 1,250 employees on the payroll today. What our staff, and what I'm trying to say is you have a lot of different staff members, and you have part-time employees that come and go. But as a general rule, our staff would say, let's say the council passes this today. Then they'd say, look, there's a requirement, where we'd ask that you go put on a mask. Now, if they choose not to do so, we're not gonna ask them to leave.
Well, that's really, I think that's the important part. Because we're requesting that you wear a mask. Now, the resolution says require. Is there any?
Well, yes, it's just. At the same time, the governor, like, his order now, it requires, there's a mask mandate, right, across the state of Texas. However, there's really no enforcement.
Right.
Remember the business in Dallas? And they changed their, they changed their interpretation after the lady that owned the beauty shop. So you do the best you can with the language, and we didn't write the language in this case, you know.
So in other words, it wouldn't change. We're exactly what we're doing right now. Employees do the same thing they've been doing. That's the point I'm trying to make. Nothing changes as far as masks.
And 95% of people are gonna comply. But yeah, you're gonna have some that choose, no, I'm not wearing a mask, and we're not gonna ask them to leave. We'll just do the best we can.
What if we change the resolution to read requested and not required? Because if we're not requiring it, then we're not requiring it.
Yeah, that's up to you.
Would you be open to that?
No, I think it needs to read the way it reads.
Well, if they're, okay, but that's the point.
You just ask me a question, I answer.
Right, but the point is, if, if you have a thousand people show up at the symphony, and none of, none of them put a mask on, and we're not gonna tell them to leave, then they pretty much are ignoring it anyway.
That's their prerogative.
That's the problem. Exactly.
And that's their prerogative. I mean, they have the right to do that.
If this motion fails, can we come back with a different resolution?
Of course, but we have to vote on what's on the floor. Of course, but we have to vote on what's on the floor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, it is sad that we politicized this issue because it's not about politics, it's about health. It does appear that if you wear a mask, you're a liberal. If you don't wear a mask, you're conservative, and that's sad. Uh, it's sad that we've, we've drawn that line of demarcation. I would challenge anybody to say that I don't care about this issue. Several members of my family have had the COVID nineteen, including myself. And December the twenty-first, my mother passed away by COVID nineteen. And I sat there in the hospital room and held her hand while she took her last breath. So I challenge anybody to try to, uh, say that I don't care about this issue. I've lost a number of families in my church. This, this is an important issue to me. I think it's sad that we're so divided over it. But I, I do know that we're in a transition period. Uh, it's always boiled down to personal responsibility. Every person doing everything they can to keep themselves safe and those around them. It is about a choice that each person has to make. I know that President Biden, according to the National Law Review, is expected to come out next month with a ruling, uh, declaring a national mandate for wearing a mask. I understand that that deals with OSHA, Mayor, and we're not subject to OSHA here with the, with the city. But again, uh, this, as with the governor having no teeth in it, our resolution having no teeth in it, the president having no teeth in it for us, it's all the same. We're trying to, uh, keep within the spirit of what the governor has asked, keeping within the spirit of perhaps what the president will be asking us. Is there, is there room to consider tabling this until next week? Let us see what the president's going to do. And today, asking our citizens, even beyond tomorrow, to please move forward in a, a safe and responsible manner. Wear the mask if you're in a high, if that high-risk demographic, age, underlying health issues. Wear the mask. Uh, if you've had the vaccine, you may not wear it. If you've had the COVID like I have, you may not wear it all the time. Uh, if you're young and healthy, you may feel like you don't need to wear it. But each person making that choice, being responsible, and we table this for one week just to see what the president will do and try to follow, uh, behind him and keep him with this, in the spirit of what he's asking us.
Councilman, if the president puts this in place, then we will already have it. We're going to have a week in between. What would be the reason to wait a week?
I, I think it, it's, um, I think it's so divisive within our community. I believe that we do have an issue about enforcement. Uh, I do like Councilman Pate's, uh, suggestion that we, we highly recommend it. I think it's divisive. I think our community is in a transition period. We're transitioning from a mandate to wear a mask to a time of personal responsibility to the third stage where we won't be wearing a mask at all. And so I feel like we're in that transition period. I do believe we're in that season where people are going to have to decide, I want to wear a mask, I don't wore, I don't want to wear a mask. And we're going to have to start transitioning at some point. I think we're in that season. I, I still recommend that people wear a mask when they come to my church, but I don't require it. But I've watched the number dwindling down to where it's a very low percentage of people that wear the mask. I see it in, in, in the community. I think our community is trying to awaken. I think people do have COVID nineteen fatigue. But I do want to be responsible, and I do want to do everything I can to keep people safe. And so those that are in that high-risk demographic, those that have underlying health issues, they should wear the mask. But those that have had the vaccine, those that have had the COVID nineteen, they, they, perhaps they don't. But I don't think that one week is going to have a huge impact on us other than I think we are on the verge of creating a great frustration in our community over requiring something as opposed to highly recommending.
And as was said, we can vote on this, and you could bring up another motion.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I appreciate your, your comments, Councilmember. I believe there are laws that, uh, that's on the books now, such as speeding. Doing thirty-seven in a thirty-five zone is a violation of the law. But it, that happens. All we're doing is trying to be, uh, and, and this can be decided by this council. One week is not going to change that. I believe today, I believe, I have an obligation to let it be known. I believe that masks should still be worn. If you don't feel that way, that's your prerogative. If you feel like this law is so simplistic you don't follow, that's okay too because it happens every day. So if we move forward and it's voted down, somebody can come back again. If they want to come back again with another motion. If they don't, that's fine. But I stand on my belief that we should have a resolution stating that we require masks. So those who want to violate the law, there's no consequences from that, that's fine. But that will be an ordinance that's the city of Beaumont has inflicted. So, uh, we don't have to go back and forth with this. Make a decision. I stand on what I believe. You can stand on what you believe, and we can go forward from there.
Yeah, yeah. And as you said, it's a transition, and I think this should be handled in transitional ways. And doing everything at one time, to me, is not transitional. And I think it causes more frustration if we're back and forth and just don't make a decision and move forward. Go ahead, please, Councilmember Muton.
Mayor, I, I just got a text from, uh, someone that's watching that said that they're, they are a nurse, and they feel that their responsibility is to do their job but without other people wearing masks. They feel that they are not being protected.
Same with our employees.
Exactly. I even, uh, can, can think about the bus drivers. The bus drivers have gone back and forth during this whole entire year with riders getting on the bus without face masks and them being exposed to whoever get on the bus and wherever they have been. So it just leaves people vulnerable to wherever you've gone, whatever you've done, whoever you've been around, to be exposed.
And with that said, Mr. Cooper, the one hundred percent would be buses too? I mean, does that, how does that work?
Transportation comes under a different mandate.
Okay.
It will be required that they, uh, follow the CDC protocol.
So they won't be at a hundred percent? Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, and, and Councilman Samuel, I do hear your, your heart. And please know that my intention in making my statement was never to try to convince you or to sway you. It was more of just to communicate to the citizens the position that I, I stand on when I cast my vote. Because I think so many times people hear us vote yea or nay, and they really don't know why we vote that way. And the other question I have is, can we, regardless of what happens with this agenda item, can we, should we, as a city, moving forward, require our employees to wear a mask so that they feel protected? And the citizens that come in feel like those that are serving them or wearing the mask, and setting an example to encourage people to take personal responsibility?
If we vote this in as required, then the employees will have to wear masks.
If it fails, can we come back and vote that they have to? Oh, well, but does that require that? Or can the city manager do that?
I believe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what would happen is, is if it fail, if it passes, yes, they would still be required. But if it doesn't pass, or if it passes with a maybe or a requested, if you want to, if it passes that way, then the city manager could still, uh, well, I mean-
No, I hear you. I know, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I'm not trying to be-
No, 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 I know.
So, um, so if that happens, then the city manager can, um, require the employees to wear masks. And I do understand that that's what some of the restaurants are doing because they believe they'll lose patrons if they don't require their employees to wear a mask. But I will say this too, before I came, and I only got to one, but I did call, um, and, um, Councilmember Muton brought up the nurse. I did talk with one of the hospitals, our major hospitals here, and they are still going to require it. They're going to do the same thing we do. They know that people might come in with a mask, and as soon as they get to the elevator, they're going to take it off. They're not going to have them arrested, but they're going to try to do what they believe is right. So they are going to require it, but they're, they're going to do exactly what we've been doing for this last year.
Yeah. Well, as a leader within the community, I have no problem with me wearing a mask to set an example. And that's why I refer to the employees, perhaps the city manager requires the employees to set the example. But again, at the same time, I wear a mask up here as you, and I don't care for it. But I, I did this because the citizens contacted us at some point and said, would you please wear a mask to set the example? And I, I chose to do that. So I have no problem wearing a mask to set the example, even though, uh, I have questions about it. But again, I don't know that I'm, at this point, we're, March the fifteenth will be one year that we started this. And I do believe we're in transition, and I'm not sure that, uh, again, ready to impose it or try to enforce it as opposed to personal responsibility.
Okay. All right, so, um, there is a motion on the floor as read. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any noes?
No.
No.
Opposed.
Okay, so four noes, three ayes. Is there another motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to make another motion, changing the word required to recommend.
Highly.
Highly.
Highly recommend.
Would you like to put highly in per the council member's request?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
So the motion is the same as it was before, except changed from, um, required to highly recommend, correct, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and then the second is Councilmember, uh, Felschau, Mayor Protem, sorry. So all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and that concludes our general business. So we have a couple of discussion items. Can you take us into that, please?
Mayor and Council, the first discussion item is to review and discuss the seating at the Civic Center. And Keith Folsom and Emily Wheeler will present, uh, various information to you and lead the discussion item.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. You know, you can't do this with a mask.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
We have had ongoing issues with the retractable seating at the Civic Center, all of which is original to the building. And I had a consultant come in and assess the seats, and his findings were that they are unsafe to use. So Keith Folsom is here, and he can give us a better idea of what our options might be.
Okay. Did you, I'm sorry, real quick, did you say what the issue is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, the, uh, I might kind of go through some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the seating at the Civic Center, you know, the facility is approximately forty-four years old. And existing seating was installed in nineteen seventy-seven, so it's original to the facility. I looked back in some of the files in my office, and it appears that probably in nineteen ninety-three, with the dates on the paperwork, there was some renovation and maintenance performed on the seating. So it must have been kind of major because it was a big-ticket item. Since then, I don't have any paperwork on that because Civic Center handled those items. But I would assume that minor maintenance work and inspections were done through the years. But the main key here right now is the equipment is forty-four years old and it's worn out, and it's movable parts. And as most of you have been in there, the seating doesn't look very nice right now. The retractable seating is the, the worst option we have right now that they're having problems with. Of course, they are on the fixed seating on the upper levels, you know. There's some disrepair on some of those items that need to be replaced. And the event facility staff, the, the retractable seating has gotten to a point where their personnel really can't pull it out. They end up having to hire a contractor to come out and pull them out. So there's an added cost in that. What we're going to propose here is about four options, uh, for y'all to consider. And some of the options is we do nothing but cover it up. Some of the options are we eliminate some seating and do some other arrangements. Uh, as I go through those, if you have any questions, Emily may be able to answer them as far as events and, and how she would use those. We would be seeking the services of an architect to put the project together if we get the approval to move forward. And that process would take about three months. And the numbers that I'm about to give you are estimated budgetary numbers, so most likely it will change. Hopefully it's lower, could go higher. But I'll go through each option, four options, so, you know, you can stop me and ask me questions if you need to. Option number one, as you look at the map that we give you, we'd be replacing the lower retractable seating on the east and west sides only. We would leave the east and west side upper seating in place, which it would not be cosmetically pleasing. And we'd probably still have to make some repairs on those the best we can. In this option also, we'd be removing the north and south upper and lower seating and not replace these. So those, those areas would not be used for seating anymore. And in addition to this, all these options that we're replacing seating, especially on the upper level, or we will be using the upper level, we're going to have to modify the balcony railing. It is not up to a balcony rail code height at this point. So it's, it's really been deemed unsafe as far as personnel, more especially if we, and some of the other options, we remove the lower seating, so it's a more of a fall hazard from that aspect. But option number one, I estimate a cost on that would be eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And I'll, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. In addition to that, the architectural fees would be twenty-five thousand five hundred. So any questions on option one?
Could you repeat exactly what we're doing on that?
Option one?
Yeah, we're removing the lower retractable seating on the east and west sides only. We're going to leave the east and west side upper seating in place, which would still be usable if, if Emily wanted to use it. And then we're going to remove all the north and south upper and lower seating and not replace that. And then we'd be modifying the balcony railing to bring it up to balcony rail high code requirements.
Did the, uh, were they compliant with code requirements when they built this facility? Or they grandfathered in, or is it required?
No, I would think it would have to be at the time, at the time the buil- the building was built.
Mayor? Sorry, go ahead. So you will not replace, replace the bottom seating at all?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the lower retractable seating on the east and west sides.
I thought I heard you say remove all north and south lower, and-
Well, we'll remove all the, the north and south, correct.
And that would stay gone.
Replace it.
Right, we won't replace that. There will be no seating in those areas under this option.
That's just one option out of four we're presenting. So you have to, you have to follow his memo.
Okay.
And each one is different. So each scenario is different, meaning each option is different. So I'd please follow the memo. And then, it is confusing, that's why we-
The memo actually has it color-coded, if y'all see.
Yeah, if you were to walk right here through these doors, you're walking into south side of the Civic Center. And then-
It's what he handed us when he came out?
It is confusing.
He handed it to us when he came out? That, yeah, that's a good one.
Well, but it doesn't have the breakdown.
No, I didn't give them a copy of the memo on it.
No, we don't have it.
We have the, um-
Yeah, you got the map, so y'all could follow what my idea was. Now, what, and what I'm saying, we've removed some of these things. It's not saying that we can't go back in the future and add those back. That, that, that it still would be an option. Right now, we're giving y'all options to hopefully reduce costs, to try to get some of the work done and make it usable.
So how, how many seats would we lose removing the two lower east and west side?
Two thousand, one hundred.
We're going to lose about two thousand. We'd have, um, two thousand one hundred and fifty-two seats would be replaced. We'd have, two thousand one hundred and fifty-two seats would be replaced. And then we'd have to, to use the upper seats, we would have to replace the railing. Does that answer your question?
It does. Okay.
Mayor, please go ahead. We lose the seats. How would that, would that have a negative impact on events in the future? Have you ever, have we ever used all the seats at any point?
Not since I've been here, so, in at least nine years. We haven't used the north side since two thousand seven at all. They have not been pulled out since two thousand seven. And at that event, the actual ticket sales numbers, it didn't warrant pulling them out.
Okay, so as...
It wasn't necessary, even in two thousand seven, at this event, to pull them out.
As the one responsible to staff an event, are you concerned about losing these seats with this option one?
No, I'm not.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So as I understand, right now, if you walk into the Civic Center, the retractable seats have not been pulled out. So the floor spacing would be as it is right now as if you were to walk in the Civic Center.
Yes, all the retractable seating right now is pushed back in.
And that's the gold and red?
Yes.
So we would lose those seats, but, so basically, it's more, well, that's okay. That's, that's the seats we would lose, two thousand seats.
No, under this, under this option, we're going to replace the east and west lower seating.
Oh.
The north and south is the one we're doing away with completely.
How about we make you a copy of this? And you could follow in writing each option.
What if we, is there a rush? Maybe we could get this and look through it and make some questions and we could come back and do it?
Another time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
So we can comprehend, how many options are there?
Four.
If there are four options, would it be beneficial for everyone to be able to read it?
If it's not time sensitive, then yes.
If it's...
Yeah, just please know that we're not, we're not going to pull that seating out. We're not going to allow people to sit up on those top sections right now. And so we can bring this back in a week or two, not a problem.
And go ahead and put, give us the memo today.
Yes.
Is it, council, y'all good with that? Everybody? Okay. I just think there's a lot to comprehend. And if we have this, then we can look at it, look at the cost. And then Emily and Keith could answer questions that we might have. Because it sounds like there's a lot of options.
Yeah, do y'all want to go through the other options?
I, I think we're good with getting the memo and coming back.
And Mayor, could, could, could you possibly give those options to us and rank them?
We did, yeah.
Are they ranked as far as your suggestion?
We were going to rank, we were going to tell you today what we were recommending.
Okay.
But we can do that in the memo.
Because we'd like to know, you guys have to flesh this out on a daily basis, we don't. So we would highly, you know, lean upon your opinion in making our decision.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we can get that before we leave today?
Yes, ma'am. The second discussion item...
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Will be led by Mr. Folsom as well. It's to review and discuss the lighting at Complex Four at the Athletic Complex. As you know, there's four complexes out there, softball fields. And in the back corner, the newest one is Complex Four. Turn it over to Keith.
Okay. Just to kind of give you a brief description of what's going on out there at Complex Four. That facility was built in nineteen ninety-nine. It's a newer facility out there at the complex. We received a call last week that one of our light poles had failed. And I'll pass out some pictures on that, that item there. So you can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Wow.
And as you can see, that the bottom of that pole has rusted out and caused it to fail and fall to the ground. Had we sent our electrician out there after we received the call to take a look at it and see what was going on, and that's what we encountered. The existing poles are sixty-foot tall. And we're installed using the direct burial method, which means poles are, you know, drill a hole in the ground, set the pole, pour concrete around it. In this case, what I, that's all, you know, the ground water comes up against the post. Concrete doesn't come above ground. So that's detrimental to the pole over time, so... And like in this case, the concrete was held three to four inches below the grade, which allowed the dirt and mortar to sit against the pole for the past twenty-three years, which is not a good idea. The one pole fell and the other eleven are failing and not safe to be near. Personally went out and kind of did some probing around it. And we're facing similar issues on all the remaining eleven poles. Some of them are worse and others are in good shape. But they all have oxidation at that ground level. What I was going to propose to you, I got some budget numbers from a local electrical contractor. Just to demo the poles would cost us approximately eighty-three thousand dollars. And that's site prep and pole demolition and haul off. If we did nothing but remove the poles, we're looking at approximately that cost. And the thing about that is, from what I understand, the fields are used quite often at night. So if you do away with them, don't put them back, then the field's not usable after dark. The next item, cost wise, to replace the post, which would be going back with a concrete foundation, anchor bolts, base plate, set above grade, anywhere from eighteen inches, two foot, or even a foot above grade. We would have to modify electrical conduit and wiring. And the estimated cost for that would be seven hundred and fifty thousand for the twelve poles. Engineering cost would run us about forty-five thousand to put the project together and oversee it during the construction portion of it. So if we combine everything, we put new lighting, including the demo and the engineering costs, we're looking at eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to put the lighting back in order.
Eight seventy?
Eight seventy-eight.
Eight seventy-eight. Now, the field lighting on the other three complexes was replaced in oh-six, which was not long after Rita because there was hurricane damage on those. Those were done with concrete foundation, anchor bolts, base plates. And they set about probably eight, nine inches above grade.
Why wasn't Complex Four done at that time?
I would have to make the assumption, councilman, that at the time, it was probably a cost savings to do direct burial versus a concrete footing.
But the direct burial's been there for years, Rita was recently.
No, the direct burial's, on this field, has been there twenty-three years.
Right.
Yeah, I think he's asking, why weren't, I don't think the repairs were needed at that time after Rita at Complex Four.
Not on Complex Four, no.
That was his question.
Are all four complexes being used frequently at night?
Well, three for sure. So the two closest, let's say, to Highway ninety are College. And then as you're going towards the Water Department, that, that's Complex Three. That's the least utilized complex. And then back in the back, Complex Four, the newest one. This one's the nicest that we're talking about right now. So the question before you is, we're not allowing any play out there right now once we're aware of these, the pole situation. So at a minimum, I think we ought to move forward and take the twelve lights out.
I agree.
At a minimum. And then what you decide next, then we can, we'll have a path forward. You can either take the lights out and you're not going to have night play for a while. Or you say, okay, no, we want to replace these lights. And let's say that estimated cost is just rounded off to nine hundred thousand dollars. Then we'll go down that road. You're going to come back and vote on the contract. But you're going to need to know upfront, this is why you have a rainy day account. You're going to pay for it with cash. And you either pay for it cash, we'll make that work. Or we, you can make a transfer to the capital reserve fund, which is normally done. But it works both ways, so just know you, think about allowing us to move forward to take out the twelve lights. And then second, what do you want to do beyond that? And then whatever that is, we have to pay cash for it.
I have a question, Mr. Manager. Go ahead, please. Okay. How much night play is, is in effect during daylight savings time?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, you have games that go on till probably ten o'clock, so you need lighting. When we have, people are playing softball eight or nine months of the year. So it's, it's a well-utilized complex, which is a good thing. And this complex is part of that, you know, part of the scheduling to allow for those games.
Is there any way, like you said, number three is the newest one?
No, ma'am, that's the, probably the, the least utilized because of the size of the fields.
So could one, two, and four be utilized with the lighting rather than three?
Yeah, three is, again, it's because of the size of the fields. And it's probably, out of the four, it's the least desired place to play.
But this is for four, I believe, right?
Yeah, we're talking about four. Which is on the very back. But I guess she's, she's saying, look, we just utilize three and maybe not have the lighting, so...
And I think Jimmy, Jimmy had mentioned to us that three is a shorter field. So one of the reasons it doesn't fit the softball play.
Are these any of the fields that we use for softball tournaments?
Overflow, yes. So most of the tournaments, as y'all know, or, go back ten-plus years, we had a lot of tournaments before Ford Park or before it caught on out there. So you, the desired place is Ford Park. And then the overflow games, a lot of the times, they go to the Athletic Complex. So that's tournaments. And then you have just regular league play, which is led by the city. And there's a lot of play out there.
It's a lot of play.
League play.
It is. Yeah.
Every week.
I don't have a problem, you asked the question about tournaments. Dean is here, our CBB director, did you want to say something?
Can I say one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
There are, right now in the group or sports business, it's booming, whereas the convention and meeting business is not. There are two tournaments coming up in April where they're playing at Ford Park. They're also playing at the City Fields. It's about a hundred and fifty teams, which means about three thousand people will be coming to town. There's a tournament on, in the second week in April and also in the week of the twenty-fourth. If you decide just to take the poles away, if there's any way we could do that in the next month, then those people could at least play during the day. That's one thing about tournaments. I mean, they'll start at seven or eight in the morning. And if they can play to eight o'clock at night, they would love to play to eleven or twelve. But we know that's not going to be the case. But if you decide just to take the poles down, if the most dangerous ones could go away first, then that would give us a chance to...
To use that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You could use it in the day, is what you're saying, and work around it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Councilmember Samuel was next, and then Councilmember Getz.
I just had a curiosity question. When did the pole fall? Was it during a storm or...
No, actually, it just made it through the past hurricanes. This was just last week when we had the cold front came through and a little bit of winds picked up. And it was just a point that this had reached the point of rusting completely in two. Now, some of the other ones, I mean, all the poles need to come down because basically when I inspected all of them, they all had oxidation on them. And it's hard to tell how much is eaten away at it now. One of them actually, actually had a hole eaten up right at the ground level. So I know it's probably the worst. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't leave any of them up because I wouldn't trust any of them.
Could we have them done by April, if we say, take them down?
We'd like to go through the bid process with the...
Yeah, that normally takes more than a month. He could visit with the city attorney and see if this would be called emergency work.
It's a lot of people to come in, yeah, okay. Well, it's going to affect the tournaments that's already scheduled too, correct?
Do we have them on, for the first term?
My thought is, if, if, if there's a chance that another pole could fall, we need to get them down.
Exactly, we need to give them up.
As soon as possible.
It is emergency.
Yeah. It is emergency. Okay, council. Councilmember Getz, and then Councilmember Pete, you says you had something?
No.
I thought you were raising your hand, okay. Go ahead, please.
So what we're talking about is an existing city facility that we're contemplating using in a different manner. Right now, we're using it only, well, we're not using it at all. And if we were to take them down, we would be using it during the day. It's an existing city facility we would be using in a different manner. So it's an unbudgeted item. And I'm trying to understand the process. Because when I brought up the idea... Sorry, Councilmember Muton, did you have something? Okay. When I brought up the idea of building a dog park at Rogers Park, which was an existing city facility, but we want to use it in a different way, I was met with objections about we've got to follow a process. And I'm just trying to understand how this is different. Because it's not, other than maybe who's asking for something to be done. We're out, we're looking at about the same amount of money to demolish the poles. It's not an emergency if nobody's over there using it. Okay? So, whoa, 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 I'm not finished talking. It's, it's not an emergency if nobody is there using it, which is what we're doing right now. So I'm trying to just understand why this wouldn't be submitted to the same procedural process arguments that I encountered when I asked to consider having a dog park built.
Would you like me to explain?
In a minute, I will.
Okay.
I understand that it is important to have these fields available for softball. And I applaud with all my heart the CBB's efforts to recruit softball tournaments here. And I would like to see the poles replaced so that we can use it at night. But I want equity. I want to be able to have the same rationale applied when I'm asking for something that gets tabled until the next budget cycle, applied across the board. We shouldn't be cherry picking and picking and choosing what we're going to do. We should be fair about this.
Okay, councilman, I believe that we've been given notice that there is a danger. Once we're giving notice of a danger that exists, whether those fields are being used or not, if someone trespasses and goes out onto that facility and a pole happens to fall and hit someone, we will be liable because we had notice. That is the difference between a luxury of asking for something to go around the process and an emergency.
Okay, so what I understand is being asked here is to have this declared an emergency and go ahead and pay for these poles to be taken down, out of cash, out of an abundance of caution, in case somebody, even though we're saying, nobody should be over here. If you're over here, you're a trespasser because you don't have permission to be here. But go ahead and take them down out of an abundance of caution.
Yes, sir.
Mayor. Yes, I think Councilmember Nield was next, and then I'll get to you, okay? I think.
My concern as well is about the liability of just staff out there mowing, citizens out there walking their dogs. There's a thousand things that could, that could take place on this. I mean, these poles are sixty-foot tall, diamond steel poles that would just absolutely crush a car. And I don't think that, I don't think we could delay the removal of this. Now, I don't think that we should have to pay an extreme price to do this underneath the Emergency Act if this thing could be, through the, maybe fast track through the bid process. But I think that should be up for negotiation.
Councilmember Muton? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Folsom?
Yes, ma'am.
Are those fields being used? Are those fields being used in a different manner than they ever been used before? They're baseball fields, right?
They're softball fields. Yes, ma'am. Not to my knowledge.
So, they are being used in the same capacity that they've always been used, correct?
Except for, I mean, once we shut them down and this pole fell, basically the whole three fields on Complex Four are shut down.
But that's your question, the fields are only being used for softball.
For softball. So, they're not being used in a different manner?
No.
Okay, and so, we're looking at eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars versus if they fall, someone is injured, we could be looking at a lawsuit that could really.
But eight seventy-eight is for the lighting too. Just to take them down is only what, a hundred and?
It's eighty-three thousand. It's eighty-three thousand to remove them. But the liability in which the city.
Even if they are trespassing, that wouldn't matter.
It wouldn't matter.
Mayor, thank you. We're talking about trespassing. What are we doing to secure the fields?
The fields are secured. I mean, you're able to lock your fields, but in the past, you know, people will find a spot. They'll take nuts and bolts out to get in if they really want in. But in this case, your poles are outside of your fence line. So, anybody that's walking around or doing anything, they can be around the poles.
So, my point is though, they're not, there's not a lot of security there, so we are vulnerable as long as those poles are standing.
That's correct.
Mayor. When I said they're being used in a different manner, obviously they're still being used for softball. The difference is whether they're being used at night. That's what I'm talking about in a different manner. And what the city attorney just referenced is an important thing in the legal world. It changes the standard of care if you're a trespasser. You do not have a duty to a trespasser. Now, if you have it marked off, no trespassing and you shouldn't be there, your standard of care is different than if you're a licensee. So, you know, it's real easy to say, well, we're going to have liability, we're going to have liability. Anybody can bring a lawsuit, but your standard of care is different. Having said all that, I don't disagree that we probably need to take them down. You know, and if it needs to be taken down because we're really concerned that somebody's going to get hurt, we need to do it, probably fast track it.
And I think that's what Keith is trying to tell us. Mr. Cooper, did you have something? Okay, all right. All right, so, so are you asking us today first, number one, to get permission to take them down, right? And spend the eighty-five or eighty-three or whatever it is, thousand dollars to take them down? And I think there's nobody, I would hope, that wouldn't want to do that. And then we will come back, is that what the plan?
Well.
Tell us what you're asking for today.
Number one, I think we can. Can we move forward and work to take the twelve lights out? We'll do that. Second, is there a consensus or agreement among the council to move forward on a path to replace the twelve poles?
Which is the.
Knowing that the cost, you know, maybe eight hundred thousand plus.
Not for me, not if it's going to be treated differently than any other capital improvement plan that we're trying to do.
Well, it's not being treated. Let me, let me talk about that. Look, this is the reason you have a rainy day account, right? This is the reason at your house, hopefully you have a savings account. Things happen, whether it be a storm, the winter event last week, things happen. Then you have to make repairs. So, when we found out about this last week, the proper thing to do is to bring it to you, bring it to your attention, especially because of the, if this was less than, say, fifty thousand dollars, we do this every day. We go make repairs and we're making repairs every single day almost. So, but because it was a, you know, it's a large dollar amount and it's not budgeted for, I thought, let's go to the city council, tell them about it and they, they should decide. It's a policy decision. Do you want to replace these twelve lights so you can have night play on three fields? Or do you want to, you don't have to do it and you just won't have night play? That's up to y'all. That's, I mean, you're elected by the citizens to make those decisions. So, it's very different than trying to add a dog park, a new improvement that's not budgeted for anywhere in the capital program or the capital reserve. It's very different. I mean, you're talking, it's not even apples and oranges, right? And I know y'all know that. Y'all know that. So, we're here today, we're going to move forward and take out those twelve lights. If it's over fifty thousand dollars, we're going to come back and ask you to approve it. And then second, you don't have to make a decision today, but it'll be at a standstill. You have to think about, do you want to have night play on these three fields? And that's, that's your, that's up to you. And if so, we'll pay for it out of cash. That's the way you do it.
Councilman Getz.
Okay, so, whether we have a softball field that we play in, play on at night, while that's desired, that's a want, that's not a need, just like a dog park.
However, it was already there.
Please, Mayor, I haven't finished talking. It's, it's a want. It's not a need. Would it be nice to have that? Yes, it would. I would love to have that too. But it's a want, it's not a need, just like a dog park is a want and not a need. It seems to me if we're going to do this, we ought to do it the same way we were, said that we were going to do a dog park. It should be put in the capital plan as something to consider and figure out how to fund it. I mean, that's exactly the argument I was given to not move forward right now with a dog park. The same exact argument. It's a want, it's not a need. We have a new capital plan coming up for presentation in just a couple of months. And I was fine with tabling the dog park idea until such time that the new capital plan came out. There was a consensus amongst us all at that point. Everybody said, I don't have anything against dog park. So, if we're going to be fair, let's treat it the same way.
Okay, but if I may, and our rules do say that one member can't overcome the whole meeting, but if I may, I see it as much different because the lights were there. It's not new. We're repairing and replacing something that was already there. I feel very strongly that bringing in softball tournaments, I know how much money heads and beds puts in. And I think if that in any way hinders us from bringing in those softball tournaments, we need to put, do everything that we need to do to bring them in. And I don't want to put Dean on the spot, but I just need to know if the lights will make a difference. And if y'all don't mind, do you mind if I hear from Dean first before you ask your question, Councilmember Muton?
I was getting ready to ask you if you could please ask Dean, our CBB director, to come forward to explain what type of money comes to our city.
You may sit down, I think. I don't think, yeah, all right. I don't hate to make you just stand up there.
The sales tax dollars brought in by these tournaments, there's probably about thirty-five tournaments at Ford Park every year. Some are so large they go over to the city fields. Also, the city fields are best for young, young girls because they could make the field smaller, it's more adaptable. The ball when hit doesn't go as fast because it's not on turf, it's on grass or dirt. We're talking about eighty thousand dollars as far as the sales tax from these tournaments. By the end of the summer, that'll bring in at least eighty thousand dollars.
That's just sales tax, that's not even counting occupancy tax. You're just talking sales tax.
That's not even counting hotel tax.
I have a question for Dean.
Okay. I think, did you have one for Dean or you just wanted to hear from him?
Well, I just wanted Dean to explain that, but also, Dean, can you explain the history of the baseball tournaments for, for the city of Beaumont and how CBB has gone out and the tournaments come to Beaumont because of the expectation of what we've provided?
First off, we have twenty-four fields within five miles of each other, Ford Park to the College Street Fields. We have great hotel rates, have all the restaurants, we have lots of things to do. It's not as expensive as going to other cities. It was already going well before I got here. But back then, there would be like one big tournament a year for a hundred and twenty teams, a hundred and forty teams. But now there's softball and baseball just about every weekend. And that's one thing that won't stop because the parents are always going to take care of their kids. And this is so important, they play for scholarships. It's just, it's, it's great business that comes here where it can go anywhere. And there are cities building facilities nicer than ours all around. It's a very competitive business. And it just brings millions and millions of dollars to the community.
When most cities put new fields in, do they put lights in? Do you know?
Yes, most, most facilities these days, most, most of them are all turf. It's, I mean, it's, it's first class all the way around.
Okay, Councilmember Getz.
Okay. I, I think it's great that we have eighty thousand dollars in taxes coming in. That's, that's for using all the fields and all, all throughout the city and that includes Ford Park too, right?
That's correct.
Okay. My question is, this one field, a Complex Four, are we even using that as overflow in tournaments right now? And, well, two-part question, are we even using that as overflow at that Complex Four right now?
Yeah, both the tournaments in April, they're going to be using that. There's actually going to be two different tournaments going on at one time. There's a youth, for young ladies, they're using Complex One and Two. And then there's overflow from Ford Park, that'll be using Three and Four. And these tournaments, I mean, they'll, they'll start at eight in the morning. Sometimes they play past midnight for their older kids.
So.
If we can just get, you know, two-thirds of the games in, it'll really help.
So, I'm just trying to gauge and understand from my own edification because if we're looking at spending potentially eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to redo all the lights on Complex Four, I mean, if we have the lights removed, which I've already said I'm not opposed to, if we could use it up to eight o'clock at least at night during, during the summer. And so, we're talking maybe two, three, four hours between eight and midnight on one complex that would be out of commission. Would that negatively detrimentally affect your tournaments in such a manner that we should spend eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand of taxpayer dollars to fix it?
For right now, I'm more concerned about the eighty thousand dollars in these tournaments coming up this summer. Because these tournament operators, they have plenty of choices. They can go anywhere.
Right.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, you need to put the pen and pencil to that and take a good look. But the eighty thousand dollars for tournaments all throughout the summer, I think that's a no brainer.
I, I agree with you and what I'm, what I'm asking though is, is it going to somehow negatively affect those that want to play and bring softball tournaments to our city to have one field, one complex out of commission for, you know, between eight and midnight? Is that going to be a deciding factor to anybody?
It will just, I mean, we can survey the, the people that are bringing the tournaments. So, I'm just saying it's.
Okay.
They're used to certain things and if we can't give them to them, they might start looking elsewhere, just like anything else.
Thank you, Dean, so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dean.
I think all that was being asked today is a consensus on taking it down and, and then we need to talk about at some point if we're going to move forward with the lights. But I got the feeling that what Keith was asking us for, because it was compared to the cost of the dog park, eighty thousand versus eighty or a hundred, that that's all we were really being asked today to get consensus. And it'll come back for a vote when you get the bids, is that right?
If they're, if it's higher than fifty thousand dollars, it will.
Okay.
So, we'll move forward to take out those twelve lights and then, depending on what the council wants to do or the next council that's seated, you know, do they want to spend eight hundred plus thousand dollars on lighting? That'll be up to them.
Okay.
And it might come into consideration. You could, you know, you could pay cash for the project. You could borrow funds for the project, just like you do street and drainage and other general improvements. You could make that decision at that time.
Well, I kind of look at it that that's how they were, that the lights have been there for, since, I don't know, before Rita because the other ones were knocked out before Rita, to bring it back to, just like when you sell a house. If, if you have some, if you have something in your pool, if it's not there, you don't have to get it fixed. But if it's there, you got to get it fixed. So, that's how I look at it. But I'm good with, I think everybody was good with bringing that back and going ahead and moving forward as fast as we possibly can to get those lights removed, Keith. I think everybody feels that way, okay? All right. So, that concludes our discussion items. Before, let's see, before I move on to public comment, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to a closed session or public hearing for the purpose to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-four of the Government Code to wit, specifically Councilmember Michael D. Getz, and to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the Government Code, claim of Joseph Jackson, Toisha Living's, and Ashley Phillips. Michael D. Getz versus the City of Beaumont. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comment today, now's the time to do so. If you haven't already done so and you would like to speak, and even if you're in our overflow room, I don't know if anyone's in there or not, but I want to let you know that if you would like to speak, please come up to the, to the chambers, fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer who will give it to the city clerk. We will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Harry Jackson, fifty-eight sixty Falcon Lane, Omaha, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm here to talk about necessity, not a luxury. But I do want to give the city, uh, street repair crew some praise. They did some work on Meadowview and Launch Drive. They repaired a covert that was damaged and replaced the concrete. And also, uh, on Launch Drive, they repaired, uh, unlevelled concrete. They, they broke it up, dug it out and redone it and I appreciate that in my neighborhood. But I'm here to talk about my sewer line. My neighbor and myself, we both had to eventually get plumbers. My councilman, he came out and viewed my issue. I appreciate you coming out, Mr. Neal, and going over my issue with me. But I don't think other citizens should have to go through that. I think that, uh, the city should have some kind of preventive maintenance for sewer lines. And if your home was built before the clean out system or whatever was installed, that you shouldn't be punished and not giving service to allow feces to run back inside your home. And if you take the cap off outside, that's the city ordinance code. So, the code guy that enforces the code comes by. And I had to go out my pocket, sort it to my neighbor to prove that, uh, I didn't have any damage on my end of, of the service. The damage was on the broken city tap. Uh, and this went on for like a couple of weeks. I tried to talk to Mr. Mike Harris. He wouldn't answer my calls. I, I called the mayor's office. One of your assistants, mayor, called me back. And I'm just, you know, kind of out of sorts with the situation that we're talking about dog parks and we got citizens that have to live with feces coming back at home and because we don't have any kind of preventative maintenance for our sewer system. And that's something that, uh, I think is, for a city of our size, that's just not, uh, appropriate. And something needs to be done. And people that are spending their money on these taps need to be refunded because we pay sewer fees and none of that has been really taken care of and I don't understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Brian Nevo, sixty-nine fifty-five Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas.
Real quick, okay.
Go Beaumont Timberwolves.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council, or good afternoon.
Good evening, council, or good afternoon. This is a statement that was requested by Chris Catalina. Uh, he's, I'm not sure what his position is exactly, but, um, it's in reference to, um, a visit that I had at the, uh, Pruitt Visitor Center, or, excuse me, at the center. Uh, so I'll just read it flat out, uh, as I sent it to him. Uh, on February the twenty-second, I put my glasses. Excuse me. Uh, February twenty-second, uh, Mr. Getz and I are volunteering at Saint Mark's. We're handing out water and food. Uh, he was messaged, text, call, whatever. Uh, he was asked by a handicapped gentleman in Ward Three, uh, if he could have water and food delivered to him. I offered to, to go help deliver it, take me a little break, uh, so I could meet him, uh, see the area, since I would be representing all wards. Approximately four-thirty in the afternoon, we passed by the Sterling Pruitt Recreation Center. And I recommended, or, excuse me, I commented how nice it was compared to Rogers Park. So Mike said, "Would you like to see it?" And I said, "Well, sure." Uh, so let's check it out. And so we went inside to take a look around, walked to the front desk, and I didn't have my mask, so, uh, we went to get one, and I came back in, took our tents, a woman did, at the front desk, and we were allowed inside. Once inside, we noticed campaign cards for war two candidates. Uh, Mike made the statement to the lady at the front desk, "Did you know it's against city policy to have campaign cards in a city facility?" Uh, she didn't question it and promptly took the cards that were up top and removed them and put them, you know, under, underneath, out of sight. Uh, under the counter. Uh, Mike continued to show me around and noticed more cards on a table near the basketball gym. Mike called these additional cards to our attention. She didn't say much, and put them behind the counter as well. Uh, we were on our way out, and the lady looked irritated or confused as to why the cards couldn't be in there. So Mike said very politely, "Uh, do you have, uh, a problem calling out city policy to your attention?" Uh, she said, "No," and we said, "Good afternoon," and left. Uh, at no time, Mike tell her what to do with the prohibited material. He only mentioned the city campaign rules to her. Uh, Mike did not raise his voice or say anything inappropriate to anyone there. There was no bullying, uh, or intimidation of any store by Mr. Getz. If any investigation needs to be done, it should be who allowed these cards in the building, who placed them there. Uh, did the contenders put them there or have permission from the bidding, building management to advertise them or hand them out in violation of city campaign election rules? Uh, I understand cameras were there, and if they were able to view Mike, well, they should be able to view and backtrack to see who put them there. Failure to adhere to city rules should fall on the building manager and staff, not Mr. Getz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevo. Is there another citizen who wishes?
Yes, ma'am. Jonathan, and I think it's maybe, uh, if I mispronounced, I'm sorry, Prosey, twenty-three oh four Wilson, Beaumont, Texas.
Can you spell that for me?
P-R-O-S-S-E-Y, I think. Okay, thank you.
P-R-E-S-S-E-Y.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, you guys mind?
Yes, sir, but your time has started.
Okay, um, I had, uh, run into an issue while I was back in town visiting, um, having seen a number of you people in about twenty years or so. Um, this guy left a letter on the door of my mother's new house saying that the city line was open, did not see any standing sewage water. I showed him a flood erupting from underneath the ground after the freeze where all the sewage water had come into her lawn, brand-new lawn. Well, if, if raw sewage, and, and we all know, we studied a little bit of casework, you know what I'm saying, over the years. Uh, there was a kid in Florida that swam in the water, and, um, now he has an enzyme disease over the same concept of raw sewage. And I asked him, I said, "Hey, man, would you go and treat the lawn?" It was a guy upstairs, uh, by the executive office, I think, on Friday, and, uh, he sent somebody there. Well, when I got this, I went back and took some pictures, and the same stuff was in the ditch that was there when I left. So, they hadn't treated it, and I came here to say something about that. Another thing, uh, we have a censorship issue here. Most of the libraries in the area have been removing the Constitution, and, uh, I'm opposed to that. I got a problem with it. I, I, I couldn't find anything except for in the law library in the courthouse. And when I went and sat down to read, the judge was peeking in to see who was reading. It seemed like a threat. Um, I, I feel like that's, that's probably a, a problem with the citizens, you know, the later generations that might need to know or might be inspired to study at one point or another. And, um, I think the city should address that. Um, and if I hadn't looked, I wouldn't have known. But I often look. Um, uh, tried to make it short and sweet. Anything else I may have forgotten, I'll probably see y'all next time. But, uh, I like that safety issue deal, but you, you should know about deliberate indifference and gross negligence. Um, if, if anybody's life is on the line, we should all look to our fellow man in order to help somebody, because that could be a relative of ours that might step in front of that pole inadvertently. And, you know, denial of those premises, once again.
Yes.
I appreciate y'all for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Pressey?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Pressey.
Please remember the address, twenty-three zero four Wilson.
Got it. Did you have something you were gonna ask first?
That's what I wanted to know, the address.
Okay, so Councilmember Muton has taken your address. Thank you, sir.
Travis Haynes, forty-eight oh five Beck Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, I'll be brief. On the, uh, when I was listening to Dean talking about the eighty thousand dollars that it brings in in tax revenue, what we all gotta, we gotta realize is how many of those people play that evening, then go to a local restaurant or wherever and spend money. I calculated, they'll probably spend about five thousand dollars a night that goes into local businesses. So please consider, you know, the revenue not only for the city, but for our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, is there any other citizen who wishes to speak today? If there is none, okay.
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone left in the overflow room? You've, we've checked, they don't wanna come. Okay, thank you. All right, um, I'll move to council member comments. I think I started over here. I'll start with you, Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. If you see something, say something. How often are we told that? On February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, I saw on social media that there was a citizen living in the north end of Beaumont who was a victim of the recent ice storm and was without electricity, food, or water. I knew the Cajun Navy was in town, and I offered to bring the elderly handicapped citizen food and water. I went down to the Cajun Navy Distribution Center and asked if I could bring this person some food and water, and they said, "Of course." Brian Nepo, a candidate for city council at large in the upcoming election, was helping the Cajun Navy pass out food and water, and asked if he could go with me, and I said, "Yes." We provided the food and water to the citizen, who was very grateful. On the way back, we passed by the Sterling Pruitt Recreation Center on Gulf Street. Mr. Nepo wanted to see the Sterling Pruitt Center, so I offered to take him there and show him around. When we arrived at the center, I was surprised to see campaign literature for two candidates in the May twenty-twenty-one election displayed inside the center. The campaign literature was on a desk in the lobby of the center, where a city employee was sitting, and on a desk near the entrance to the gym. If you see something, say something. In my opinion, it was inappropriate for political campaign material to be displayed at a city facility. It is also against section two-five-five-point-zero-zero-three of the Texas Election Code, according to multiple opinions by the Texas Ethics Commission, and is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by up to a year in jail and up to a four thousand dollar fine or both. If you see something, say something. There is no city policy stating that a city councilman cannot have a conversation with a city employee. There is no place in the city charter that says a city councilman cannot have a conversation with a city employee. There is a provision in the city charter that says a council member cannot interfere with the city manager hiring or firing or disciplining of a city employee. But that is not the case here. If you see something, say something. When I saw the campaign literature on the desk at the Sterling Pruitt Center, I said something to the employee behind the desk. I asked her if she was aware that there was a city policy that prevented campaign material from being displayed at city facilities. At the city council meeting of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, the city manager confirmed that this was the city policy when he said that if the right person at a city facility sees campaign material laying around, they will pick it up and try to get it back to the candidate. Now, the city ma, now, the city manager is saying that that is not an actual written policy. Well, it should be. And I will be asking this council, as the policymaking body in the city, to adopt an ordinance saying so. But even if it is not a city policy, it is definitely against the Texas Election Code, as I previously have mentioned. At the city council meeting of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, a council member accused me, or another council member, he didn't name me by name, but accused of bullying a city employee, demanded an investigation, and to have those investigation results brought back before the city council. Subsequent comments made by the city manager caused me to be, realize that I was the target of this investigation. It is not the first time I have been targeted by some of the people in this room. Some of the people in this room do not want me to remain on city council. There is a plan, and I'm not part of that plan to them. Fortunately, the citizens of Ward Two get to make that decision, not them. If you see something, say something. When I said something to the city employee behind the front desk, I did not raise my voice. I did not instruct her to do anything with the campaign literature. When I called her attention to the city policy, she took the material off of the desk and started putting it underneath the desk. In fact, I continued to show Mr. Nepo around the facility and saw some more campaign material on a nearby table. I told the employee, "Hey, there's some more over here," and I picked the cards up, walked back over to the employee, and handed them to her. The cards were still in her hand when Mr. Nepo and I left the Recreation Center. She did not throw them in the trash, as she claims in her statement. A video of this, a video of this whole incident will confirm that when I left the Recreation Center, the cards were still in her hand, and that is because at no time did I demand her or tell her to do anything. I saw something, I said something, just as I would hope any citizen would do. In fact, the investigation results show that the city human resources director asked the following question to one of the alleged witnesses to the conversation between myself and the city employee. Question, "Did you hear Councilmember Getz tell the employee to put the cards in the trash?" Answer, "I don't remember hearing Getz say to put the cards in the trash." The reason this witness did not hear that is because I did not say that or anything close to that. The focus of this investigation should not be my very brief conversation with this employee. It should be who put the campaign literature at the Sterling Pruitt Center? How long had it been on display? Why was it not picked up until I said something? It is interesting to note that the manager of the Sterling Pruitt Recreation Center is the father of one of the candidates that had the material displayed on the desk and the table. It is impossible for me to believe that the manager of the Recreation Center was unaware that his son's campaign material was on display. I have now learned that this campaign literature was being handed out inside the Sterling Pruitt Center at youth basketball games the weekend before this incident. I have formally requested an investigation take place into the placement of the campaign material at the Sterling Pruitt Center, and I'm also requesting that an investigation take place into the distribution of campaign material at youth basketball games. I wanna know who did it, who was aware, and why it was allowed to take place inside a city facility. It is interesting to me that this serious election code violation is going seemingly completely ignored. In a few minutes, according to the agenda, there will be an executive session to hear a complaint or a charge against me. Under the law, I get to choose whether I want to have this matter heard in executive session or whether I want a public hearing. I will choose to have these allegations be held in public. I hope that the people making these allegations are going to come forward and make their allegations under sworn testimony, subject to the penalties of perjury. As a matter of due process, I should have the right to face my accuser and cross-examine him or her under oath. Anything less would be a kangaroo court. I also note that the agenda has an item styled, Michael D. Getz versus City of Beaumont. I want it note, I want it noted that at this point, I have not threatened to sue the City of Beaumont. I retain lawyers in this matter to advise me of my legal rights, but I have not made a claim or filed a lawsuit against the City of Beaumont. This is nothing but a further attempt by some in the city administration to politicize and distract from the central question of why is campaign material being allowed to be displayed inside City of Beaumont facilities in violation of the state election code. Again, I have requested an investigation into this. Beaumont taxpayers deserve better from us than these petty arguments. They want us to make this city better for all of its citizens. They want us addressing issues that impact their lives. It's time we stop these petty side issues. As we move forward, I will continue to do my best to serve the interests of the people of the City of Beaumont, and I can promise the citizens that if I see something, I will say something. God bless the United States of America, the state of Texas, and the City of Beaumont.
Councilmember Neal?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to say congrats to the CBB for a well-put-on event this past weekend. Uh, thoroughly enjoyed that, and it looked like the crowd did as well. Um, while we were talking about light poles, it got me thinking, um, can we hard barricade out sixty feet around the twelve poles, or eleven poles that are left, Mr. Manager?
Probably the ones surrounding available counsel. Probably would be feasible, and we can block the entrances to the facility in the parking lot. Probably the best, because you have a ditch on that kind of northwest side, so it's not 60-deep in that ditch, so it'd be kind of difficult.
But if we can at least show an effort to try, I think that would go a long way, especially knowing the liabilities that we have on that. Last but not least, my kids attend a school here located downtown Beaumont called Veritas Classical Academy. And the upper school, let's say congrats, those guys came in Segat and State and Mucktrail this weekend, so a good deal for Beaumont.
Got it. Councilman Mayor Procheyan Philshaw?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Pay.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. How many students?
There's 30 in the upper school.
And the team that came in first, how many students?
Most of those schools had 1,000, down to 500.
That's, congratulations, that's great. Also, I want to compliment Dean, the great job that they've been doing all around. Remind everybody about Restaurant Week. You'll notice I'm not picking any restaurant in particular because they're all great. I think you've got 52, and that's up from last year, as I recall, or the year before. So if you get a chance, it goes from March 4th through the 14th. They've got all sorts of, every one of them has some special that ties into Restaurant Week, so you've got everything from barbecue to hamburgers to fine dining. I mean, it covers it all. So, let's support our local restaurants, and we're really happy that Dean's done such a great job. Lamar University started their football season last week, they played at home. They are showing some improvement, it's a new coach, it's six-game season. The next home game will be the 20th, so I would invite all of you to come out and watch. These guys are really progressing, and it is our university. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Dean, to the CBB, your staff, you had a beautiful, beautiful event. Keep reading that almanac because it really worked for you. Beautiful weekend. Also, again, Restaurant Week is March 4th through the 14th. Get out and support our local restaurants. Also, about the discussion over the continuation of using face masks, on yesterday, we had 57 new cases of COVID reported in the City of Beaumont, so if you think COVID is gone or not wearing a face mask isn't needed, that's a reminder of the new cases, just as of yesterday, 57 new cases of COVID. And this is from our city health department. Also, I lost a very, very dear friend of mine, Mr. Edward Buddy Adams. I just want to send condolences to his family. Thank you.
You have anything, City Manager? City Attorney?
I saw something, so I guess I need to say something. There is an item on the executive session, Michael D. Getz versus the City of Beaumont, and the reason for that is, is that on Thursday, March 4th, a four-page email was sent out by Mr. Getz to myself, the manager, and the council, and he lists three lawyers in his email, three of his lawyers, and in the four-page email, he makes references to violations of his constitutional rights, his statutory rights, his inherent rights, speaking of railroad jobs and star chambers and gross unfairness in the treatment that the investigation of the incident at the Sterling Pruitt, I guess, resulted in. He concludes his email by saying, "Continued refusal of this request violates my rights to due process under the Constitution and may require me taking further steps to make sure that my legal rights are not infringed upon." Now, I've been a lawyer for a few years, and, you know, I read that as, you know, from a lawyer, with three lawyers in addition to him on the email, and I think there may be some litigation coming in the future. So, the next step is a letter from a local law firm, a happy wherever law firm, respected law firm in town. Three-page letter from one of the three lawyers, requesting formal investigations, making deadlines and demands. So again, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to believe that litigation may be in the future for the City of Beaumont where Mr. Getz is concerned. As the lawyer for the City of Beaumont, I would be irresponsible in my duty as city attorney not to bring it to your attention that there's a possibility that Mr. Getz may sue you. And then there's the possibility that you need to know what the consequences of that might be, and it is my responsibility to come to you and tell you what those consequences might be. The Open Meetings Act allows me to do that in an executive session, excluding Mr. Getz because he would be the opposing party. And you have a right to freely and openly discuss the consequences of this contemplated litigation without him present. So that is why I put that on the agenda, to bring it to your attention, the contemplated litigation that you may be facing. And the law gives me every right, gives you every right as a client, to address that issue in an executive session. So, that's where we are, and we will, I guess, recess and go into executive session to discuss that matter further.
Yes, sir, as soon as I make comments, please.
I have something I need to respond to that because he did not say the rest of the story. The rest of the story is that, once the agenda came out, the law firm of Mahappy and Weber contacted you to clarify that there was no contemplated litigation, that there was no claim being made, and they asked that a corrected agenda be posted, and they asked that that be done, I believe by, I don't know, 10:00 AM Monday morning. Of course, that wasn't done, and if you have some authority by which you can cite to keep me out of an executive session, I would like for you to provide that to me so that I can review it. Thank you.
Well, as we all know, most of you know, we probably all know, that there is such a thing called a statute of limitations. If he believes that his rights have been violated, he has a limited, a period of time within which he can file his lawsuit. Doesn't have to be Friday, doesn't have to be today, doesn't have to be tomorrow. And in my conversations with his attorney, I gleaned from that discussion that they're waiting to see what you're going to do as a city council before they decide what they're going to do as lawyers. So again, that's a contemplated litigation, and I caution you, I mean, he's misrepresented things to us before, and I suspect he'll do it again, but I have things that I need to discuss with you as my client that he should not be privy to as opposing party. He cited to, or provided to me, a case just before the council meeting that further gives evidence that he's still contemplating litigation. It's a case that involves a trustee being censured by a trustee board, and in this case that he cites to me, there is authority that says that that trustee was excluded from an executive session, where he filed lawsuits, well, he actually brought lawsuit after he was excluded from the executive session. So, you know, it goes without saying, the lawsuit will support excluding him from the executive session, but that would be up to the council to decide.
Mayor, again, I'm sorry, I am sorry, Mayor, but, you know, if you're going to say a case that says something what it says, and if you recall, I asked that that case be provided to the entire council. In fact, I asked Angie to copy that case, and you said she couldn't do it. So, you know, that particular case, Mayor, is important for the council to see because it does stand for the proposition that an elected official cannot be censured for exercising their First Amendment rights. And the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals last year provided a decision, which is the law that governs Beaumont, Texas, that the elected official who was censured for exercising his First Amendment rights had a valid Section 1983 civil rights action to bring against the community college that censored him. But I have not threatened to do that, and I have no claim to do that. It is something that everybody up here needs to know about before any action tries to go down that path. And again, I asked if there was any authority that you can rely upon to keep me out of an executive session. I am an elected official. I am a council member. I have every right to attend executive session, and you say it should go without saying that I should be able to be excluded. No, it shouldn't go without saying. It should be said, if you have a law or an Attorney General opinion or anything other than your own opinion that would keep me out of executive session, I ask that you provide that to me so that I can review it. And if you can't, my intention is to be up in executive session for anything that is being said concerning City of Beaumont business.
Mayor?
Okay. Did you have something? Yeah, I would really like to...
I'm hoping that we will move forward. This is not a discussion item.
Exactly.
We've been lenient, I've said and allowed them to go forward, but that isn't, that is not a posted item to go back and forth about. He has a remedy. If he is excluded from the meeting upstairs, he has a remedy, and it's not to have a discussion down here.
Yeah, but there is a posting of a public hearing on his behalf, and I think that the, our council, meaning our legal council, was trying to explain why they were doing that, and so I did get some leniency, but we're not going to go back and forth anymore. Okay. Okay, so, we've talked about a lot of things today, and I know that one of the... One of the attributes of Councilman Getz to his constituents is that he asks a lot of questions. He continuously wants to know what's going on, and a lot of people believe that's good, and I do too, because I do think we have to have Republicans, we have to have Democrats, we have to have liberal people, non-liberal people, males and females on our council, and it's not healthy to always agree. I 100% believe that. I'm sure some people on Facebook will say I was lying or something like that, but that's okay because I've dealt with it for several years now. But with that being said, enough is enough. All I hear through this campaign, by the way, which I'm not in, is divisiveness, divisiveness, divisiveness. Those of you who are saying that, think about what the common denominator is. It's just disheartening that we can't move forward and do the things we used to do and continue to do the great things we used to do without every little thing being questioned and saying it's disparity or it's not fair. I would ask a question, we talked to Mr. Conwell to Dean about the CBB and the tennis tournaments that we've had and how great they were said to be in our city. If we had light poles that fell down there, would we say, wait, this is not fair? The light poles were already there, but we would say, we're not going to fix those? That is not the same as putting in something new. I, for one, think we have to do everything we can to promote tourism in our city. I've always felt that way, and everybody knows that, that's the industry I used to be in. And I would today vote to put the lights back in. But, that's a council decision, and as I said earlier about the mask order, y'all do what you feel you need to do. I'm not trying to press this, I just think we need to make some decision. I go back to the questioning and, you know, and one of the things you said was that there is people on this council that want to get rid of you, that have something going behind you. That has been done to me for the last probably three or four campaigns with some people on council. I know that. But if you want to run the city, run for mayor. That's what I'd say. But, you know, I want to make it very clear because I know this will be mistruths on Facebook. I'm bashed on Facebook every day. I even am at the EOC trying to get through winter storms and hurricanes and everything else, and I get something from you, Mr. Getz, asking me a question, and I, in good faith, wrote back to you, and you put part of it on Facebook in writing, and it caused a frenzy of hate toward me because you said I didn't want to take care of the homeless, basically, because I wouldn't open up the civic center as a shelter. But I knew, and you can ask the people at the EOC, that we were already working with shelters. We knew that we did not need another shelter. We didn't have what we needed to have a shelter. Some people are saying, they're used to it, just let them in there, free for all. We don't need cots, we don't need blankets, we don't need food, they'll just be happy to have a place. That's not true. Anybody that's been in emergency management knows that's not true. So what I'm trying to say is, there's nobody after you here. You were given the opportunity last week to let the council have the information, period. Wouldn't even be on our agenda. Would not even be on our agenda, and if councils, if there were two council members that wanted to bring it back, then they so could. Oh, yes, that happened. So, you know, I, for one, when I read that email, I did feel like there was a threat. I felt like there was a threat of 10 o'clock the next day, and, you know, I usually don't do this because this is not my nature, and I'm sure people are going to say, oh, she's just picking on him. But you know what? I'm tired of being picked on myself. So I'm going to say what I think. If you see something, say something. If you hear something, say something. And I'm going out, so it really doesn't matter, and I'm sure you're happy about that because you've been the one trying to get somebody to run against me for the last several times, and I know that. But that's not why I'm leaving. I'm leaving because I've been on for 27 years, I've been through multiple disasters, more than anyone else, and I just really want my life back. So it's not because of the pressure. I'm a strong person, I can take the pressure, but I just will no longer sit and let half-truths, mistruths be said, because do y'all know that anybody can say anything they want on Facebook? Anything. Doesn't matter what it is. They can make fun of you, they can ridicule you, they can talk about your hair, they can talk about anything they want, and some people believe it to be true. And I know that'll happen, I'm giving a lot of ammunition today, so bring it on, that's all I say, I can't help it. But, you know what? I will say again to the citizens of Ward Two, he does a good job for you, asking questions and knowing what's going on, but ask yourself, what has he been able to get done with the rest of this council? You brought it up. No, I'm not asking you to answer. So, basically, that is a good thing. I do believe it, but I believe at some point, those questions turn into charter violations to where the city manager, you say that, you know, well, I want to know what's happening with those employees. It's not our right to know what's happening with those employees. That's the city manager's job, if you read the city charter, and everybody talked about how I didn't know it, but regardless, if you read the city charter, that is, you, we do not know up here if those, if that's being investigated, and we won't know. We don't know when an employee does something wrong. They do not work for us. They do not work for us. They work for the city manager through the department heads. I have never been privy to an employee doing something wrong or doing something out of policy. I've never been privy to those H R investigations, and I shouldn't be. And just to say that they're not being investigated, and what should happen and would happen, how do you know it's not happening? You don't. But it is our responsibility to make sure that we don't have hostile work environments. I'm not saying that we do, or we don't. But it is our responsibility to know that and to do that. There's no witch hunt here. Call it what you want, there's not. I didn't, when that was brought up, and you almost slipped and said he said your name, when that was brought up two weeks ago, I honestly can tell you, I had no idea who was being talked about. There was no who, what, where, when. If you hadn't brought it up, sir, nobody up here would know. And hopefully, if it continued, we would get the information. Was there an offer made not to put this on the agenda, to send everything out to the council? If council wanted to bring it back, they would have, and was that done?
It was rescinded. That offer was rescinded. I accepted the offer.
Wait a minute, no.
I accepted that offer. I have an email to prove it.
Uh, I saw it, but I'm not going to get into that.
Stairs, because the proof is in the writing.
Yeah, I understand, and I saw it, I know that, but... Anyway, that's what I wanted to say. You know, there's a lot of people that are close to you that I love dearly, but stop attacking me, stop. Because this has become my fault, I didn't even know about it. So I'm done, and now we will recess into executive session.
I have the right to have a public hearing downstairs.
Yes, you do, after our executive session.